We don't have any electronic participation today, everybody's here. Pleasure for you.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Aline?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is Hampton Instructional Resources, Dr. Davis, but you like to do the video before that, right?
Yes, if I could.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say good evening, everyone. We had an opportunity, I saw many of you and really appreciate you being out at schools today. Today was our first official day of school and saw a lot of bright smiling faces. So, our communications team just put together just a short video just for you to get a snapshot of this morning's arrival. So, we just wanted to give you that snapshot, show you all the bright smiling faces. We really are off to a good start for this school year and just thanking all the board members who came out. We saw a lot of parent parental support, all the community partners that really made the first day off to us. So, thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you to all your staff and every teacher and worker that worked very hard today. And I think it went very smoothly, right? One small hiccup, but I think it was fine.
Yes, they're always a little kid, yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
The excitement was palpable. Almost at every location, you can just feel the intensity. Everybody was just excited. The children were excited, you know. It's a great day.
It was. It was a very nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to have Dr. Davis present some information on some Hampton instructional resources that we truly feel are going to be a great benefit to our school division.
Good evening to our Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Majet. Thank you so much for allowing me to give a brief overview of some Hampton instructional resources. Please don't let the name fool you. It is an LCS thing. We'd like it to be a thing. But I wanted to provide some, just some brief history on how we got here, where we are currently, and how it will benefit our division overall. We are very much in need. We know that we have had some teacher turnover. We know that we've had a lot of new teachers, some folks that are career switchers. So, taking a look over the last two years, I've done a lot of work with the Academic Success Committee. I've been very thankful for that throughout this process. But I've also seen through instructional walks and just review of material scores, et cetera, that we needed some additional resources and we needed some continuity and consistency across our division for all of our folks. So, one of the things that I started to do was digging a little further and how can we get that? And how can we impact K-12 curriculum? Not one specific group, not one specific content, but how do we give a tool across the division that is impactful? And it's very specific to Virginia. So, one of the things I did some research on, we were able to pull Hampton Instructional Resource materials. What this offers our division K through 12, its curriculum across all areas in science and history. We are also working on some other contents as well, but science, history, English, and math. And that provides detailed lesson plans that enhance rigor and relevance across the board. It provides depth for Bloom's taxonomy across the board. It provides consistency. It provides us a solid template to utilize. It would take a great deal of pressure. It's like a bank or a resource. One of my favorite things that we talk about with Ms. Lowry through Academic Success is that teacher treasure box. This is actually one of her ideas that she allowed me kind of to bring to the table and say, how do we get these resources? There are slide decks. There are opportunities for assessment questions. There are instructional resources. There are 27 school divisions across our state that are already utilizing these resources. I wanted to make sure that it was tried, true, and rich in part of that research. So, as I went across, I wanted to see who was utilizing it, review some of that data for scores, and see what that teacher retention rate was going to be. In several of these school divisions, we've had much better success. They have had, I won't say we because we, we are here, I am here. But they've had great success in retaining their teachers because it's taken a lot of pressure off of administrators, long-term subs, career switchers, and our new teachers, and has given some rich resources for our veteran teachers who have the ability to extend across the board, extend and accelerate for our students by providing that resource. So, in bringing these instructional resources in, our team would actually be vetting and going through and rolling the process out to provide appropriate training on that, provide our administrators' resources to say, this is how you utilize it and it's how you access it. We would not simply open up the platform and say, here you go, take off with it. But we would be reviewing to ensure that it aligned with our logs. So, logs would be for that pacing purpose. So, as we go and maybe have a student from RSPN Elementary in third grade that may be at Bedford Hills in third grade, there is a common resource, not even, not just along the alignment component, but common resources that are specifically aligned to standards of learning for Virginia and specifically target those learning outcomes and goals for all of our students.
And just to note, Lynda Martin's, it was Lynda Martin's idea.
She's watching. They've all been wonderful ideas. So, a lot of those, and again, I think that is important to note because we've gotten a lot of feedback and what can we do with that? So, we really want to let our community know, we hear you, we want to support you. We want to take the pressure off of you and we want this to be a resource and a tool. Even with that, we went back to look through our lesson plan template, or lack thereof, throughout the division, and we were able to develop a consistent template that is very, very easy. It's not one of the old school where it's five, six, seven pages per lesson, but it's very condensed, but attacks all the learning targets, outcomes, goals, and what those essential questions, big ideas may be for, for those particular lessons. It also heavily attacks vocabulary, which we are very excited about as well.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Dr. Gupta, do you mind if we recognize those members of the Academic Success Committee? Because my understanding, someone at work is, like you said, Lynda Martin, but it's work that's been going on for some time.
We got Mrs. Lowry on Academic Success. Who else is on? Dr. Farmer is on Academic Success Committee?
Gloria Preston was on. She helped me do the pamphlet. Dr. Farmer, myself.
So, the three board members, thank you. All your hard work making it successful. So, Mrs. Preston, she started with you in this process.
I'm willing to answer any questions that you all may have from it. We have, we've had some discussions about it, but we would love to be able to have the opportunity to really dive into this work and really provide framework, consistency, and just a true bank of resources to our folks and do that in a way that is meaningful, purposeful, and intentional for our school division here.
So, just let us know, I guess, how the teachers are receiving it, if they find it valuable and are using it.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Do, do we have any school districts in close proximity to us that are using it?
Yes, sir, we, we do. So, to name a couple, Appomattox County is using it. Danville is using it. Let me, let me look through. I know that those are our closest in partners. I believe Roanoke is also using it. Please don't quote me on that if anybody hears me and they're not. But we do, I did do a count and we do have 27. Obviously Hampton is using it. We have some larger school divisions as well, but all Virginia-based.
Okay, second question. Is it designed for a feature is not available because a substitute comes in and come in and use it?
Yes, sir. So, it's meant really to encompass and embody all staff. So, if we have a long-term substitute that would need help, they're not, somebody's not taking their time. Typically, that's where we see some gaps at. Other folks are having to create lessons and give them off to somebody else if there is not a teacher in that classroom. This allows just a plain, you come in, I'm going to hand these to you and they're ready-made and we're able to pick up and move with that.
When you all were going over this, were there any teachers in-house involved in testing?
In the testing?
Like, over the materials, the resource and all that?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Like, or just viewing the materials, the whole platform?
There, our instructional team started to review that, those materials. The teachers would be able to view them if we, if we're able to move forward. It's not, again, it's a tool. It's not something that they absolutely have to use, but they are Virginia-aligned. So, it's really not something outside of the scope of what they are used to for standards of learning.
Right, right.
So, the expectation would not be that we hand these over and they absolutely have to pick up tomorrow and start using these pieces. That's part of the vetting and the data collection of how they're beneficial for our teachers and what that looks like moving forward. We know that it's an immediate impact for our long-term subs, immediate impact for our brand-new teachers, and immediate impact for anybody who is a career switcher. We know that it would be an immediate impact for that as well as our new administrators, instructional coaches, et cetera.
Right, and I understand that. So, are there any teachers involved on the instructional team?
That's our division-level staff. So, there are not teachers on the, on that division-level staff.
Let me just correct. It's everything but a tool. You didn't get my joke.
But a tool. Oh, ha-ha.
I did get it after a minute.
Oh, that's funny.
You've been up for a while today, so it took me a little longer.
It's a tool. I said, no, it's anything but.
Not everything but a tool.
Other questions for Dr. Davis? Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Connor, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Aline?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is work session consent item. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Before we do that, I don't know if I need to pull the human resources piece out for purposes of disclosure?
Or you can make a disclosure?
Prior to?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll not be voting on the consent agenda?
Well, I can't vote on one of those items.
Items.
And I'm going to say it this way. Hereby declare that I have a personal interest in the matter for the board as it pertains to my spouse's employment.
With exception.
Oh, okay.
I was looking at Attorney Towns. Do we need to pull the item out or can we?
As far as you all want to, you all can either take out that particular item and vote on it separately or Mr. Barron can decide to abstain from voting on the whole matter. But at this point, he's just making the disclosure for the public about his interest in the employment of his spouse and that he's going to abstain. However, Mr. Barron would like to proceed if he'd like to ask you all to take out that one item separately?
Well, I do have interest. Actually, I would like to also pull item one from the consent agenda for conversation if possible. So, I don't know if we have to pull both of them, but I definitely want to pull that one.
Which one?
Number one regarding the.
The human resource. So, why don't you give it?
No, 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 the one regarding the elementary restore program.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah.
And then he also wants to.
You want to or you're leaving it in the consent?
I'd like to pull item one and then I can, we can also pull item two for the sake of disclosure.
So, is there a motion to approve item three and four?
The addendum report.
You did the disclaimer, right? You did, did you read the whole disclaimer?
I did not. I stopped halfway. I hereby declare that I have a personal interest in the matter before the board as it directly affects my spouse's employment. Therefore, I abstain from voting on this matter and I'm providing the clerk with statement of disclosure for the board's records. Thank you.
And for record, the superintendent has certified fairness and fitness as required by the Virginia Code?
Yes.
In the hiring process. So, there's no bias in, in hiring process. And those steps as required by the statute have been fulfilled.
Yes, and I've signed that and that's in your board docs as well.
The statute requires the principal to certify and the superintendent and we have complied with both. Just for the public consumption. I know Attorney Towns is looking at, right?
Yes.
Compliance with that. So, is there a motion to approve item leftover consent agenda?
Would that just be item four?
Three and four.
Three and four?
Yeah.
I'm moved. So, move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mr. Barron?
Abstain.
Mr. Aline?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
We go to elementary school restore. Mr. Barron, floor is yours.
So, a purpose for pulling this is, again, forgive me because I'm new to this and I'm just learning. But, you know, as we, I listened in on the facilities and finance committee and I understand from a fiscal standpoint why we would say, hey, let's just pull this program. But what struck me as odd was that there's a whole lot more involved in terms of like academic achievement and we talked about achievement gap and things like that. The cost of the program per student, one, I'm not sure where those numbers come from. Two, what's the cost of not doing such a program? And I think that's some of the questions that sort of formulated in my mind is, I know some of the people that work within that program. I know some of the work that's being done and some of the ways that it is essential to classrooms being able to function. And I didn't hear much discussion as I listened in, but I would love to hear more about what is the plan? If we're going to shut this down, where do those students go? Where do those teachers go? Where does that grant money go? How do we know that we can rewrite that grant? That's a process, right? So, there's a lot of questions that formulated in my mind as I listened in and it just seemed odd that it was just sort of shuffled along. And so, forgive me again, as I'm learning this process, I'm just wanting to learn as much as I can, have as much information as I can as we look at an item like this. Because we're talking about teachers. Teachers that, that, they do this job because they love this job, right? And so, we're just going to reassign them. At least if nothing else, say, hey, let's, let's talk about this with transparency in a public way so that we're not treating our teachers as pawns. They're actually people, right? They're, they're people that have a legitimate interest in our students and wanting to make our schools better. So, that's why I asked to pull. If we could have some discussion around it, I'd be appreciative.
Mr. DePaul and Dr. Majet, I came through the finance, so.
So, I will start it off and then, of course, I'll defer to Dr. Davis and Ms. Jameis. But a lot of the concern when we first got to looking at all of the programs, LCS Elementary Restore was one of the programs that there weren't a lot of students in there at one time. We also have the TAP program that serves elementary students as well. And so, that initial looking at it, some of the concern was when some of those programs were put in place, particularly Elementary Restore was put in place some time ago, fully funded on grants. Well, some of the issue fiscally was as we were moving forward and looking into the school year that the, that we were absorbing a lot of it on the local side and understanding that when those grants closed out at the end of this fiscal year, this academic year, that, that wasn't going to be something that was going to be necessarily sustainable. So, a lot of the early question was, is that something that is dissolved early before students are enter, enter that facility or enter that program for this academic year? Or is that something that it goes throughout the course of this year? And so, that was sort of the conversation with the Finance and Facilities Committee that night. And then you remember, I think, an earlier meeting, we gave some data on the program. So, initially, if that did end early, so if that's the decision tonight that, hey, we end it now, then we recognize we're going to have to look at transitioning that staff, it was about six or seven staff members, seven to be exact, to transition to help at other aspects of either TAP or possibly the secondary restored programs and things like that. So, that's sort of the initial pieces. Did I miss anything, Dr. Davis, with that portion?
So, there are currently students in the Restore Elementary Program, right, that are enrolled as of today, like they started today?
Yes.
A few.
Okay, so, do those students just automatically roll into TAP? And what's the capacity there for, for taking students on it?
So, one of the considerations if, if this were to occur would be if we would extend and do an additional classroom or so with TAP to absorb some students based on the need for those particular grade levels. RA Elementary is currently serving kindergarten first and has been for the last couple of years. So, if we are at capacity with TAP for those particular numbers, then we would absorb that K and one and two classroom because we're not high in numbers currently right now in that staff, that current staff we have would help to serve in that, help to serve with TAP in that capacity.
Okay. Restore, if I'm not mistaken, is a tier-two program and TAP is a tier-three program, correct?
TAP is a tier-two and a tier-three program.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, that, since, since its creation, it also started, it started to my knowledge as a pilot program several years ago. And it was serving as a tier-two and a tier-three. Again, remembering that we don't have anything specific to tier-two for grades two through five. So, for TAP specifically, it could be tier-two and/or tier-three for grades two through five. So, that is, it is a tier-two, tier-three program.
Okay.
Mrs. Lowry, you had a question?
And we had had discussion, what was it, back in May or April or something, but about Restore Academy when the other.
Dr. Brown?
No, no. From Fort Hill.
Dr. Glover?
Yes, Dr. Glover. He came and I probably think part of that was part of the Restore issue that we were talking about, wasn't it?
There could, there could be individuals in the grant, but not necessarily Restore.
Oh, okay. So, maybe that was just a Fort Hill conversation. I'm getting them confused. Okay, no problem. And two, one thing you have to remember is, under grants, teachers are informed they're under a grant. So, they know it's temporary.
Sure.
They know it's not a permanent job position. They're told that upfront. And then if they choose to accept it, then they understand that when it ends, it ends.
I understand that. I think I still struggle with, hey, for day one of school, now you ain't got a job no more. You know what I mean? Or reassign.
That's not the case.
But I understand.
I was like, we're not getting rid of them.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, but, but they signed on for this job, right? So, there's a consideration here. It's like, hey, maybe they don't want to be whatever other teacher. I'm sure they'll be team players and they'll do what needs to be done. Those are the kind of people that we have in the district, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, man.
But they're, but they're made well aware it's temporary. It's based on a grant, so.
And then to answer your grant question about what that would look like, because you, you asked the first program question. I started talking about TAP and the transition, but I want to make sure we answer the grants portion of your question as well. What that would look like.
So, we set up the criteria by which we want to run the program for the grantor. So, at any point, we can do an amendment and move that money into another criteria that we want to support. For example, the money that we set for Elementary Restore, we could roll it up to Secondary Restore. So, we will not be losing any grant funding in the support of that. We will just push more of the revenue towards the, the Secondary Restore program.
Is, is there an approval process for that, like a, a grant committee that has to approve that?
So, we actually, the grants team submits an amendment to VDOE and VDOE approves that after review of it. They're not going to, at this point, it's our last year for stop funding. They're not going to, not, I don't believe they're going to not give us that money. They will just, when we, when we come back for review, they, we have notified them that that, those funds will support a different program and it'll just be a part of the monitoring process. So, we are very transparent with VDOE when it comes to grant funding.
I imagine so.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I guess we're just, we're assuming that it's going to be approved, that there's going to be no hitches?
There is no reason it would not be approved. Yes, sir. That is our allotment for that particular program, funding the grant, and we are the ones that set up that program. So, we can go and say, we want to set it up a different way. VDOE, as long as it covers the same services, should not have an issue with us setting up that program a different way to fully fund or to fund as much as possible the Secondary Restore program, so.
Okay.
And those people are located in, currently, they're in the same building, TC Miller Elementary. No, Elementary, I'm sorry. They're located in the same academy, my fault.
I've got questions.
Is there, so is it essentially saying, hey, this costs a lot of money and it's not really effective? Or are we saying, hey, it might be effective, but it's not worth the, the cost? And what, what is the, it can't be just purely financial. That's, that's what I'm trying to kind of get my mind around.
It's not.
Right.
Based on all the information that's been presented before the committee, the, it's an aspect of efficiency that we're going to have the same level of care and, and, and coverage of the students and we're saving, we're saving money at the same time. So, it's a win-win, the way I understand it.
And it was 120,000 per student was the number that I heard. What does that come from?
That comes from the costs of, of the program and the number of students that are being serviced by that program.
Which is how many students?
The exact number.
I think on average, it was no more than five at a time, but the, I know she had presented the data a couple meetings ago. What was it, overall, for the course of the year? I think it was 16 for the year.
About 16 or 17. And I just, I'm trying to visualize the chart not on, but I believe it was 60 was the total number served for the last year, if I'm not wrong.
I think some of that cost came from the behavior specialist. There's all these specialists and it's just not the teacher.
I understand.
Other people, yeah. You had to pay all of them and their insurance and everything else. So, that's where the cost comes.
The, the key question last year when the presentation was made to the board is the ROI. Because end of the day, you like academic success of kids. And the SOL scores are failing and getting worse when they're going back to the school. And Dr. Day is missing because he visited the schools where they go back after they finish Restore and the teachers were complaining they're falling behind when they come back to the base school. So, that's another key marker. We got to look at it. Are we getting the return on our investment in terms of academic success of that?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I definitely recognize like the work that that program does and the stuff, people that are involved in that program. They really are. And I guess my concern is that, you know, we, we dropped this and we don't maybe have the catch that we think we do to be able to put these kids where they need to be so they get the resources they need. Because it just does cost more per person to, to, some of these kids, I've met these kids. I've talked to these kids. I've seen these kids. It just costs more to meet those specific students' needs and that's just the reality of it. I don't know if it should cost that much more. I'm not, that, I don't have that information. But that's, that's where my hesitation lies.
You, you brought up that they do great work. They do a great job. I'm not going to challenge that. I'm wondering what your criteria is if, if they're coming back into the base classroom, base school, and their scores are dropping.
Well, it's, it's not just about those students. It's about the rest of the classroom. You think about these kids coming back in and say they're just not re-entering very well. And then you have a whole classroom that, you know, you have to evacuate a classroom because a kid throws a temper tantrum or something. Like, what's the cost of that? You know, a whole day of instruction lost, right? What, what does that cost? I think there's some intangible kind of financial aspects to this that I just, I don't have my head around.
Well, you may have mentioned that they're doing such a great job. They're returning to the classroom with the same problems and lower scores. So, I was wondering what, what criteria you had to say that it was, they're doing such. So I was wondering what criteria you had to say that it was, they're doing such a great job.
Well, I think there's a number of students that they continue in the program, that work in that program, that maybe they won't be able to make it back to the classroom. But does that mean we just write that kid off? I don't think so. But that program allows us to continue to meet those, that student's needs without disrupting a classroom environment. And so I don't know that success is necessarily that they make it full circle and are able to re-enter the classroom, per se. I think that that's great, if that can happen, but it's just the reality is, it's not going to happen with every kid. They don't have the home support, they don't have, you know, whatever ability, cognitive ability at that point, to be able to make that re-entry. And I just, I don't, I don't think that means that it's a failure of a program. Maybe it means, in some ways, that we need it even more, because we've got to continue to reach these kids and meet these kids' needs, every student, right? By name and by need, and so.
But, but like they're saying, the kids don't go just back to the classroom, they're going to go into TAP. And the teachers that are helping because that grant ends, they'll go into the other programs. They won't be fired or anything, they'll be used again.
Certainly, certainly.
So really think of it as a movement. They move from this room to this room.
If that's, if that's the way it works out, that's great.
Fort Hill definitely needs more teachers. They need a science teacher, they need a history teacher, probably even more walkers. They have a waiting list to get into Fort Hill. And one of the issues that I came across is, it's not just about the money and not about whether or not the kids have a specific, special need, but the replacement of certain disciplines, such as suspensions and expulsions, with circles and other things that are a part of restorative justice, lead the children to see less of a consequence to their actions. And it's not good for them. It has been shown that, as they were saying, that they come back into the school system with the same problems and the same attitude, perhaps. So there has to be a balance there somewhere. And if the product of the program isn't a better quality than what they were doing in the regular school system, we should adjust it, we should change it. If it means cutting it and adding something later on, the, I don't know. But there's two things that I heard were recommended. One is a rebranding of the students, for instance, that go to Fort Hill, of the program there. Rebrand it would be fantastic, because some students can't deal with these larger school environments. They need the small spaces, they need to know that they're known by the teachers. And Fort Hill offers that. There's a couple of other things there, but that's, that's my input.
Okay. So I want to just clarify a few things, and I know Dr. Davis will help me out, she's been here longer than me. So first, Mr. Barron, I definitely understand, and we are going to ensure, because ultimately, we want to have some type of transition versus we get to the end of the year and it's like, boop, the program cuts off.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, because of the money. So this at least gives us a time for some transition, because we recognize, after this year, those students will be in TAP, and we're already looking at, how do we revise this to make that, make sure that this is a suitable transition for those students? And then as always, yes, those staff members are, they've signed on for a grant, but as with anything, there are always vacancies. We've already looked at, hey, we know where we may, you may transition to this year, but we're sure that there will be spots next year where we can, because we recognize, these are people in the community, they work here, you know, they work for us, they live here. So can we continue in another role? The attrition, that happens, we'll have vacancies next year. So we do want to make sure that we can support them as staff members, but also support those students in that transition. But I want to kind of touch on a little bit, Mr. Gillo was mentioning about the Fort Hill, and we recognize, we want to make sure that we have proper supports and things there with them and continue those supports. The new principal there is doing a fantastic job. We had an opportunity to be there today and just really connect with him and the staff, and they were very expressive about what their needs were for kids, which was awesome. What do our students need there? So we're looking at some pieces there. We recognize CTE and other areas have been a big push, and we have already, Mr. Marshall and Dr. Davis and I have been making those connections with Community College and other agencies to see how we can provide that level of support for them, so that they'll be productive. But it's almost a little bit of apples and oranges, because Elementary Restore, many of those individuals who are there teaching, absent of being a special ed teacher like myself, are not endorsed K-12. So those aren't necessarily individuals that we could transition to Fort Hill, but there may be individuals who may be able to help with maybe Middle School Restore, and because it's a progression, it steps to it. So, you know, Fort Hill is way over here, but you have Elementary Restore and TAP, and it's sort of a progression when you start thinking about disciplinary infractions and where your placement may be. But definitely want to do some things to help those students at Fort Hill, but want to make sure that we have an understanding that Elementary Restore is very different from the students at Fort Hill in terms of the placement decisions as to why they're placed there. Did I miss anything?
Hi, no ma'am, I would definitely didn't miss anything. I would just elaborate on the component of the certifications, and folks would ask how this middle school work in maybe Fort Hill doesn't necessarily work, understanding that Fort Hill is 612, and a lot of our waiting list issues are the spacing and size. At Fort Hill, not necessarily our staffing. So that is one component. And the other piece is for Elementary, we do see a lot of certifications that are K-6, and understanding that Elementary, or excuse me, Secondary Restore, one of those primary grade levels that is served at Secondary Restore is sixth grade, so that would be a more simplistic transition if that were, to come to fruition as well. And then recognizing that some of these positions for Elementary Restore are also not teaching positions, so that behavioral support that Dr. Majet alluded to, that we would continue to provide support, some of those may be, how do we best utilize and push into schools to provide some of those supports in the classroom? Or how do we push into other programs to provide some of those supports that are very much needed, that may not be suited in the traditional classroom every day?
And thank you for saying that. I want to add that piece, absolutely. I was a special ed teacher, worked with students with emotional behavior disorders, I get it. But I want to make sure that, when she said the push-in piece, as we start reimagining this and as we start moving forward, whether it's this program or anything else, how do we start providing that level of support for students in their base schools? Also, providing support for teachers and working with these students, or providing that staffing to give that support in the base schools? Because I can pull you in a smaller setting, but you're eventually going to leave this world, I mean, you're going to leave us and you're going to be in the world in larger settings. So how do we have something in place that if I have you in a smaller setting right now, how do I help you with that transition, that progression, so that you're in a larger setting? Because we're preparing these young people to be out here in the community, college or world of work or military, whatever they choose to do, but how do we work on that progression for those students? And I, you know, push in as much as we can and provide those supports where they're in their regular school setting, just seems a bit more ideal. And of course, having those smaller settings for those students who absolutely need it. But this gives us an opportunity to sort of, how do we revamp some things and look at, what's the best support for each individual child?
And that would be good, because I know there were teachers last year that talked to me, and they said, you know, the kid's coming back and they're lower and stuff like that, but the transition needs some adjustment. So that's good that, you know, they'll be working on the transition, maybe make some changes to how they transition in. They were being transitioned, and it was just some teachers saying it wasn't as efficient as they thought it could be, so.
Dr. Davis, in your professional judgment, will this merger cause any adversarial effect on, in the academic journey of these kids we are serving as LCS Restore?
Professionally, one of the things that we are evaluating is how we can merge the needs of our students for behavioral supports, along with the academic components. One of the things that we did do about middle of the summer, we, we've been collecting master schedules and reviewing a lot of those things, but we did request them from our alternative sites as well, so I can drill down, my team can drill down and say, how much time is, time on task is being had for reading? We're evaluating that at the, at the base schools. Are we also evaluating that in our programs to make sure, again, that instruction is provided? Hence, talking about the instructional resources and what that can be. So one of the things that we have done, in my professional judgment, is we have to make sure that that is in alignment, so that we are adequately prepared, no matter what program we are in, whether that be a TAP or an RA or Fort Hill, to transition our students successfully back to real world.
What I'm hearing from you, you're assuring this board that you have done it, and you'll continue doing, to make sure there's success in the record.
We are going to, we are going to continue to work very, very hard to ensure that, because our students deserve that, and they are very much of that every day.
Other questions?
The mention of transitioning, so what did that process of transition looks, look like?
So it looks a little different per level, so I can't give a broad statement of what that may be, or even the length of time, because it is going to be based on that particular student, how they transition back into a building. So it could be partial days for so many weeks. Again, data is collected, it is merging. One of the biggest things even for TAP is making sure that, I use that as an example, because we've mentioned that today, making sure that base school teachers, administrators are also visiting that program to ensure that students have a familiar face, that they don't feel like they're forgotten when they go to a program, to build a behavior plan if that is needed, when they are leaving an alternative setting and transitioning back in. So what that looks like for a student is really based on their success and what those supports, and it's very individualized to the student, but the base still lays there of who's visiting, common faces, what are essential skill strategies that worked for that particular student. Sometimes it's a visual for a student, communicating that a visual for a student when they're becoming frustrated, that was very successful. Maybe we didn't know that when we entered the alternative program, but it becomes very successful. So all those things are built into that transition plan and that work. And who's involved in that? It's a collective community of who is involved, but primarily, those coordinators and principals at the building level will help to merge alongside of school counselors and other support staff.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one humble request to Mr. Poe and Mrs. Lowry. As we move forward, maybe have community conversations through 40 Ways you run, right? That's the best place for people to be able to come and link with what are we doing in terms of projects like this?
So, you know, I hear a lot that we're putting in terms of the academic side of this. Let's say you invested a lot of resources from the academic side, is there a gap that we can connect with families? Because here, again, these kids are going to have to go back home and go back into families that are not functioning, you know, top class, whatever. Is there something that we can sort of bridge a gap to be able to have some connection, that family support can be brought in, just not only the academic side of it?
Yes, sir. A lot of that transition, a lot of the conversation, especially at our alternative sites, happened with our principals and the folks that lead those programs, to say, this is what we're seeing at home. Again, could be something like, like a visual support or flip cards, that's a pretty common one that it's used, instead of saying like, hey, we're going to do something at school different than how we do it at home. We're communicating what we're doing at school, so that that can be practiced at home as well, for that continuity and consistency to build repetition and recall for students. So yes, the short answer is yes. I know that was a little long-winded, but the short answer is yes. Wanted to provide some context, instead of just providing that.
Okay. All right. I appreciate giving concession conversation. That was very helpful. And I, I think the desire is, you know, based on what I heard in just the committee, I was like, man, there's people involved in this. If I have questions and I'm outside of this thing, certainly, there's some people that got some big questions, right? And I felt like we at least owed it to them to have a transparent and open conversation, a little bit more detailed conversation about this issue before we just, you know, make a decision. So I appreciate that. My vote will be a vote of confidence in our leadership, and I believe that the people that we have in those positions, whatever assignment they're given, will continue to respond with top-level.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I will make the motion to.
To approve it. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
And Dr. Farmer. Madam Clark, would you please call the row?
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Ms. Eileen.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mr. Gillo.
Yes.
Dr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Poe.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, we pulled out item two, Human Resources Report. Since you pulled it out, is there a motion to approve now? I know Mr. Barron will abstain from that voting on that, so I'm just making public to know why he's abstaining. So is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
Mrs. Lowry.
Second.
Mr. Connor. Madam Clark, would you please call the row?
Mr. Barron.
Abstain.
Mr. Eileen.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mr. Gillo.
Yes.
Dr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Poe.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is informational item, Academic Success on August 26 at 3:30. And Finance and Facilities, the same day at 3:30, Mr. Connor is telling me.
Yes.
Next school board work session, September 2 at 5:00 PM, Joint City Council School Board Meeting on September 9 at 4:00 PM, location to be determined. Discipline Committee Meeting, Data Review Committee on September 11 at 3:30. VSBA Training on September 16 from 9:30 to 2:30. Next school board is on September 16 at 5:00 PM. LACR is on September 16 at 3:30, it's canceled. Finance and Facilities is September 23 at 3:30, and Academic Success Committee is September 23 at 3:30 PM. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, because it said for the joint that it was still to be continued, but is it at the STEM Center, or is it still?
We'll find out. The staff is working with the city staff.
Okay.
We don't know the location.
Yeah.